Welcome to the Marshfield Zoning Board of Appeals, Tuesday, August 12th, 2025. This is a hybrid meeting, so if you're dialing in, please use star six to mute and unmute yourself. We're being taped by MCTV, just so everyone knows. And I think everyone's, Rover's not here, right? It's not online or anything?
He's not here.
Okay. Oh, that's right. All right, so we don't need to do a roll call. All right, so I'm gonna take 2547 first. Andrew, you don't believe they need a special permit here? Forty-seven Constitution?
That's Helen and Kevin Tarpey, Andrew?
I'm just bringing it up, sorry.
Oh.
I'll read it in anyways. So, 2547 Helen and Kevin Tarpey. Petitioners are seeking a special permit in accordance with 305-10-10, 305-10-12, 305-902 of the Marshfield Municipal Code to raise the existing structure and construct a new elevated thirty-foot-by-thirty-eight-foot, two-and-a-half-story dwelling with a fourteen-foot-by-thirty-foot deck on the property located at forty-seven Constitution Road, which is further identified on the assessor's maps as being on parcel K-11, 2211, and is located in the R3 Inland-Wetland Zoning District. Andrew, do you believe they don't need the special permit?
That's correct, because they are taking a non-conforming structure, and they're demolishing it. And the new structure that they're going to place on the slot conforms to all the setbacks. Fifteen in the front, fifteen on the side, and thirty in the rear. The deck, which is less than four feet off the ground, is less, is half the, half the setback, same with the stairs on the side here. And the, and the side is fifteen on this side. Building area didn't go over the limit, and I felt the building space was, was offset. The only issue I had was with the platters. Well, I guess honestly, now that I look at it, I guess one other thing, so literally the only thing would be the deck.
For the special permit?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it's, it's going into setback.
All right.
Was, the problem is, it was it was conforming, and now it's gonna be non-conforming.
Okay.
And where is it?
So, it probably needed a variance on special permit, not the actual deck, because the deck's gonna be more than four feet off the ground. And it's gonna go more than halfway, it's gonna go like have one or two feet into the required setback. And it's also gonna go beyond the footprint of the previous deck.
Okay.
That would require variance.
Well, the, the pre-existing, Andrew, the pre-existing structure was non-conforming, is that correct?
But not to the rear. In the rear, it was thirty-two point nine. And the deck was low, is less than four feet.
This is four point nine.
Andrew, where, how, how far would they have to pull the deck back to make the deck conforming?
It wouldn't be a, no deck, wouldn't have one.
Zero deck.
No.
The whole house is elevated.
You have four foot, a four, a big, just on your four-foot deck.
How are you gonna do that if it's elevated? You can't do that if it's elevated.
They don't get the, I don't understand, but you don't get the relief with elevation.
What?
Something that needs to be looked at on decks, you get it on your house.
But it's a second means of egoism.
I understand, but it's, relief isn't there. All right, so we just stepped in this.
Well, Greg.
Greg, you wanna go ahead, you wanna continue, what do you wanna do? So. Bob, you got something to say?
Yeah, I mean, I, I thought this was in the inland-wetland district, too.
But it's in both coastal and inland wetland. It's.
Well, it needs something if it's in the inland-wetland district, because you're.
This is not an inland wetland district.
So this is mapped on the zoning map as being in the inland-wetlands district, is what the zoning map shows?
But it's not.
However, the soils show that the soil here is well-drained and excessively well-drained. It's not meeting the soils criteria of the inland-wetlands district. So we added.
The zoning map is not to be relied on in the Bible.
Thank you.
And if that's the case, we are not in the district at this point.
Okay. Unfortunately, that's the official map of the town, so I think Andrew's right that the zoning map needs to be updated, but it's not the official map of the town, and the official map of the town is the one that was last approved at town meeting. So it's still in the district, and there's a mechanism to be pulled out of the district.
Oh, well, the map says it's for reference only, and we changed the definition of the district at town meeting in the Bible.
Is, and I'll throw this out, I guess first to you, Andrew. Is the inland-wetland district determined by soils or elevation? What determines?
Determined by the soil, so this is the definition of the district right here on this page. So, the inland-wetlands district superimposed over any other district established by this Bible except that those of all lands in Marshfield, which have been identified by the Soil Conservation Service, that being characterized by poorly drained and very poorly drained little soils, and very poorly drained soils from layed organic deposits, and having water to water near the surface seven to nine months of the year are included in the district.
Thank you. So hypothetically, your lot could be in the district, and your neighbor's lot, which has excellent drainage, may not be. And then their neighbor, two doors down, may be in the district.
That's correct.
That's how it works.
That's kinda crazy.
That makes no damn sense.
Oh, it's about to be fixed.
Well, anyway, so your argument, Greg, soils are great, we're not in the district.
My, my argument is, even if we're in the district, we meet the criteria for it. We applied for the special permit. In case you interpreted us in the district, personally based on the soils, which has been my discussion with Andrew in the past, we're outside of it, but I included it in the request because we meet the criteria. We're elevating this house up to comply with FEMA standards. It's attached to town sewer, it's attached to town water. We're bringing a house that's currently in non-compliance into compliance with side yard setback. It seems like the issue that was misinterpreted here when we made our application is with regards to the back deck.
Yeah.
It seems that, you know, this house obviously has an existing deck, it is not more than four feet in height. In that being the case, you can encroach into the rear yard setback. However, where this existing property is, the ground surface is at elevation four. The FEMA floodplain's at elevation nine. FEMA requires us to be above the floodplain, so the house is elevated at elevation thirteen. You know, our deck would be level with that first floor at thirteen, so you walk out the door onto your deck.
Right.
That sounds like it requires a variance, which is not what we requested. We were, we were under the guise that this was a special permit request.
So you could, you could have a deck less than four feet that covers the same area. It just can't be at the same elevation as the house.
Correct.
Under the reading of the bylaw.
Correct.
So it's not the encroachment as much as it is the height?
In a sense, probably what they could do is come off with a landing and have these stairs back next to the house, and then have that deck extend all the way out as long as it was below four feet. They could do that by right.
So come out with a small deck, then step down to another deck that extends further?
Essentially, what this, you know, is, it's just locked.
Right. The stairs.
This landing and stairs would be tight against the house. This deck would be down here at this landing. You know, so your deck would be lower than the house you stepped down to go onto the deck, but that could be done by right.
And just so that everyone's clear, I am not in favor of the granting of a variance. I don't believe this is a hardship. Doesn't meet the legal standard of a hardship.
No.
Not having the deck the size that you want.
So we can give them their permit tonight based on these adjustments, and then if they wanna come back for a variance on the deck, they could do that.
So we, we would propose then, our plan specifically calls out the deck elevation at elevation thirteen, which does not comply. We would propose the deck at elevation nine, which would be the four-foot.
Yes, would make.
So that would comply, that would allow you to move forward, grant the special permit. If you, if necessary for the inland-wetlands district, I think you've heard that it's not necessary from the building inspector, I'm gonna defer to you.
I think you should be granting it, because the map that's referred to is the Soil Conservation Service. We don't use the Soil Conservation Service, and we use the Natural Resources Conservation Service. So that map is the one.
All right. So you think we should grant it?
I agree with Andrew that the maps need to be updated.
Well, they hopefully are gonna be. We've heard.
And I don't have an issue with the special permit being considered and proved if you think it's warranted, but I think you ought to grant it, because I think this.
Just to protect the applicant. Sure. All right.
So at the nine feet, then?
The deck at nine feet, yeah.
Because that's what we're.
So does anyone from the public have anything to say? Anyone online? Seeing that there's none, I'm gonna move that we close 2547 Helen and Kevin Tarpey, forty-seven Constitution Road. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Heidi Conway, aye.
Jean Lee, aye.
Mac Brothers, aye.
And I move that the board vote to grant the petitioner's application for a special permit, subject to the conditions. Andrew, what do they need? The deck at nine feet. Constitution, right? So the proposed EBA new structure will conform with all required setbacks and density requirements. Building permit and a do they need, no, they don't, they need a floodplain permit, Andrew?
No, they need compliance with the floodplain by law, building permit finalized, but with a certificate of.
Thank you. Based on the finding of the applicant's proposal to raise the existing structure and construct a new thirty-foot-by-thirty-eight-foot two-and-a-half-story dwelling with a fourteen-foot-by-thirty-foot deck on the property located at forty-seven Constitution Road, generally shown on a site plan dated June 26, 2025, revised August 8, 2025 by Morse Engineering Company Incorporated, Jason Scott, PLS, and the architectural plans dated June 17, 2025 by Custom Home Designs of Marshfield. Four pages meets the special permit criteria of section 1012, 1301 F, four of the Bible. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Heidi Conway, aye.
Jean Lee, aye.
Mac Brothers, aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, I'm gonna, so now I'm gonna do the continued meeting, so in case anyone's here for them, they don't have to stay.
Don't have any paperwork, huh?
So, 2541 Michael Mazzini, petitioner is seeking a special permit in accordance with 305-10-10, and site plan approval under 305-1202 of the Marshfield Municipal Code to place a four-foot floor, eight-foot-by-twenty storage containers on the existing pavement, nineteen-foot floor away from Westley property line, twenty-seven point two from the Southley rear property line, forty-seven point seven feet from the property line on the property located at twenty-one oh five Ocean Street, further identified on the assessor's maps as being on parcel G-070230, located in the B2 zoning district. Petitioner requests to continue to September 9, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Heidi Conway, aye.
Jean Lee, aye.
Mac Brothers, aye.
Okay, and then we have
Desmond Price.
Yeah. Dana Junior, trustee Dry Seal Trust, 2545. Petitioner is seeking a variance in accordance with 305-10-11 of the Marshfield Municipal Code to, and for relief from 305-1302B Coastal Wetlands Overlay District to construct single-family homes on the property located at 605 Plymouth Avenue, which is further identified on the assessor's maps as being on parcel K-101909, located in the B3 inland-wetland zoning district. Petitioner is requesting continue to September 23, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hold on a minute before you vote. Make sure you open the public hearing, because the request on a variance has to be opened within sixty-five days, and your continuance should be conditioned upon receipt of an extension of the timeframe or the conduct of the public hearing, because, you know, essentially this was filed back in July? No, June 25th? It'll be beyond a hundred days, you'll be looking for a constructive approval.
Okay.
You should be in here tonight. This is a violation that's been going for years.
But that's, that's not the one I'm reading in.
You're, you're reading the appeal, you're reading the variance petition. Dry Seal Trust, seeking a variance in accordance with 305-10-11. Yeah. This, we, we, I believe that we opened.
The other one you talked.
No, you opened the other one that was on another piece of property. That's a continued to today.
That was thirty-seven.
Oh, so this, this is new.
We opened, wait, didn't we open an appeal before?
Two, two years ago, there was an appeal of Andrew's enforcement letter, and he went through the appeal, and now we're back.
No, we went through this property before.
So this is a request to continue this, this meeting? And you're saying?
We opened the public hearing.
I did.
If you're gonna give an extension, it's conditioned upon the applicant extending the timeframe for the board to complete the hearing, because you're gonna run up against the hundred-day deadline to grant a variance.
Oh, by the twenty.
You'll be the first one to request a constructive approval.
All right, so you're talking about by the twenty-third?
What?
By the twenty-third of September, we'll be past the hundred-day mark. And he applied in June?
We're getting close, he applied June 25th.
All right.
And this is a longstanding enforcement issue.
I understand. All right, so we'll, I open the meeting, I will request.
Move to continue?
Yep.
To September 23rd? We do have a meeting on the ninth, but his, his lawyer.
So we just need him to send us a letter agreeing with us on the extension.
I'm perfectly okay trying to accommodate a, a schedule for someone that makes, needs to make the arguments. I'm not opposed to that, I just wanna make sure that you don't get jammed up.
With the hundred days.
With either opening the public hearing or completing your work on the.
We just opened it tonight, so we have a hundred days from tonight. Right?
No, you have a hundred days.
Oh, from the application.
The date they filed.
It's June 25th, so still, we're still under the deadline at the 23rd, but I think, it's too close.
I will let Jay know tomorrow.
Yeah, we just will have him give us a signature.
An extension.
So he's saying continue with.
We'll continue until the twenty-third, but he's gotta give us a sign.
Continue.
So we can just do it at the next meeting. All right?
Not for a second.
Everyone, oh.
Second?
Anyone, everyone in favor?
Does everybody understand?
Yeah.
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Heidi.
Jean Lee, aye.
Mac Brothers, aye.
Aye.
All right, so then I have Mill Pond, 2549 Mill Pond Realty Trust. Petitioner is seeking site plan review under 305-1202 of the Marshfield Municipal Code, a variance in accordance with 305-10-11 for the relief from 305-504 to allow the continued historical uses for the future uses, and special permit in accordance with 305-10-10 to allow the existing businesses to need operations for future new and similar businesses on the property located at 835 Plain Street, which is further identified on the assessor's maps as being on parcel D-100205C, and is located in the I-1 and inland-wetland zoning district. So Bob, we need the same thing from them, when did they apply?
I mean, I don't think you're under the same timeframes with these gentlemen, but, you know.
They're not going for a while.
We had a special.
Well, this is.
Six acres to be used for. And now we have twenty-five acres that are being used by twenty-one users. And we have three units in the water resource protection. This can't happen.
No, I agree. All right, so we.
Continue until the 23rd?
Continue to, petitioner, continue to the 23rd, September 23, 2025 meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Heidi Conway, aye.
Jean Lee, aye.
Mac Brothers, aye.
All right, now we're back. Yes, so that one's continued. And.
That's Mill Pond, that's the 23rd.
So now we're on to, twenty, yeah, 2546 Kurt Giles. Petitioner is seeking a special permit in accordance with 305-10-12 of the Marshfield Municipal Code to construct a sixteen-foot-by-sixteen-foot single-story addition on the property located at 24 Woodchuck Lane, which is further identified on the assessor's maps as being on parcel M-0501054, as located in the R3 zoning district. Is anyone here for this? Oh, come on up to the table.
I'm in the front room.
Uh, go ahead.
I thought it was pretty straightforward, I wanna put a sixteen-foot square addition on the back of my house. I'm here because the lot is already non-conforming due to size. That's why I need a special permit.
Any comments from the board on the planning?
Do we have any comments from the board on this?
Nancy, do we have any comments from board of health or planning?
No.
Does Andrew have anything to add?
I think, other than your notes, Andrew, do you have anything to add?
No.
Anything from the board?
I mean, no question.
Any from, anything from the audience? Anything from anyone online?
You know, she should make the comment.
What's that?
You know, she should make the comment. Need more drawings.
All right, so seeing that there is none, I'm gonna move that we close 2546 Kurt Giles, Woodchuck, 24 Woodchuck Lane, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Okay, well, do we need to talk about any of this stuff first, or no?
I just asked if anyone had something.
No, I, I know, but I wasn't realizing that, don't be fresh, I wasn't realizing that we had.
Do you have something, is it?
Yeah, do you have any draw, any other drawings, are you gonna be submitting any other professional drawings for this?
If, if for the building permit, I have two years, I will.
Okay. Don't they require?
Mr. Giles, did you see the comments from the building commissioner?
He did not.
Uh, as far as wetlands?
No, about, about what you're proposing to do.
No.
What he said was that your plans would be insufficient for getting a building permit.
Oh, okay.
More developed plans.
All right.
Andrew, did you wanna speak to that at all?
I just, I'm on Andrew's schedule appointment to, to meet with him, or I'll, I'll go over what you need to do, or just a little help with it, we'll get it done.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else? Just make, if you make that condition, they come up with an as-built plan, then you'll know the setbacks are right. That's all I'm looking for. Yeah.
I had it surveyed, so.
Yeah, I mean, you'll need a surveyed plan before you can get an occupancy certificate. All right, I'm gonna start over. So, I move that we close 2546, 24 Woodchuck Lane, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Heidi Conway, aye.
Jean Lee, aye.
Mac Brothers, aye.
Now, I move that the board I move that the board vote to grant the petitioner's application for a special permit, subject to the conditions. These, uh, the plans are insufficient and need to be reviewed by the, for the building permit, with the building department. If, um, this project will require compliance with the floodplain by law, a building permit, a final as-built, and a certificate of occupancy. Based on the finding that the applicant's to construct a sixteen-foot-by-sixteen-foot single-story addition on the property located at 24 Woodchuck Lane in a location shown on a certified plot plan dated July, John, June 19, 2023 by FO Waterman and Associates Incorporated, Richard Clinton Nelson, PLS, showing addition meets the special permit criteria of 1012 of the bylaw. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Heidi Conway, aye.
Jean Lee, aye.
Mac Brothers, aye.
All right, so now we are, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Now we are on to you know, um, so, yeah. 2548 Rick Colestein. Petitioner is seeking a special permit in accordance with 305-10-10 of the Marshfield Municipal Code to permit the reduction of the parking space requirements to eighty percent of the required in-the-table law street parking regulations, 305-808M on the property located on Progress Way, which is further identified on the assessor's maps as being on parcel D-0901130, as located in the I-1 zoning district in the planned mixed-use overlay district. Uh, go ahead, name an address for the record.
Hello, I'm Paul Seaberg from Grady Consulting. I'm here along with the property owner, Alfred Colestein, as well as the future owner of the athletic facility. We are here tonight for the proposed athletic facility project located at 26 Progress Way for site plan and special permit approval. We had initially met with the board on June 24th to present the project. During our last meeting, we were asked to meet with the zoning enforcement officer, Andrew Stewart, to determine the number of parking spaces required for the proposed use of the site. We determined that the parking requirement would be one space per four hundred square feet of gross floor area. In accordance with the bylaw, that would be a hundred and one parking spaces would be required. And in addition, we discussed that a special permit request to reduce the parking to eighty percent of the requirement could be considered, given the use of this project. The project currently proposes eighty-one parking spaces now. We've increased the parking from the previous proposal of fifty-eight parking spaces to eighty-one, so twenty-three additional parking spaces are now proposed. In addition, we received comments from the peer-reviewed consultant, Pat Brennan. The comments were very minor. We will adjust the inverts of the two drainage structures requested. Curb stops will be added along the perimeter of parking spaces that don't have any curbing, and two additional ADA accessible parking spaces will be added as well.
To make the four.
To make four, correct. We also received comments from the planning department as well. There are questions regarding drop-off and pickup areas, as well as the parking requirements as well. For pickup and drop-off, we are considering proposing three of the spaces out in front between the handicap spaces as drop, dedicated drop-off and pickup spaces with signage.
Aside from the eighty-one, or like separate?
That would be included with, inclusive of the eighty-one, correct. With respect to the twenty percent reduction in special permit requests and parking demand, we've done a separate analysis of the zoning requirements using a ParkGen software. We determined that there basically are two distinct uses of the site. The forty thousand three hundred and eighty-eight square foot building, the sport court use, which is thirteen thousand two hundred square feet, and then the athletic club use, which is twenty-seven thousand two hundred square feet, combined forty thousand three hundred and eighty-eight square feet. The sport court hours of operation are from 7:00 AM to 2:00 AM, consisting of pickleball with a maximum users of twelve. And the basketball AAU team runs from around four-thirty PM to.
Did you say two AM?
Seven to nine.
Okay.
Seven to nine. Seven AM to nine PM.
And then the basketball AAU team.
Sleep in at that time.
Runs from four-thirty PM to nine PM. Correct me if those are.
Those are wrong. It was a test, it's a work away.
So consisting of mostly transient, like the AAU, um, will consist of mostly transient drop-off members. Um, and based on ParkGen, it would be twelve parking spaces would be required for the sport court area. Um, as far as the athletic club, which operates twenty-four hours a day, uh, based on ParkGen, we calculated eighty-four parking spaces would be required. Um, the total number of parking based off of the ParkGen software would be ninety-six spaces, and eighty percent of that would be seventy-seven spaces, which we are proposing eighty-one spaces with the special permit request. Um, it's our opinion that the board can grant the special permit request based on the following. The parking demand varies throughout the day. Um, the gym is open twenty-four hours a day. Uh, the sport courts consisting of thirteen thousand two hundred square feet of the site operate out of fourteen hours per day with no parking demand the rest of the day. Uh, the pickleball and AAU basketball hours offset each other. Um, the maximum pickleball users would be twelve and often would be commuting together. Basketball is for AAU kids under eighteen that mostly get dropped off, reduces the parking demand. And some users, users will be from neighboring apartments, which, uh, will have access and utilize the town walking paths that are around the area as well. In addition, we've got some renderings here. Uh, we can see one on the board.
Does Andrew have these?
I don't believe he has these, we just got these. He has the floor plans.
Can you email that to him?
Turn it to him now. Do you have a copy that you can email him now, so he can put it up for everybody to see? Or no? No?
Email, will you copy that?
I did not, I did not.
Thirteen thousand square foot.
Yeah, I guess that that's what adds up to the number.
Be happy to answer any questions and also the owner of the athletic facilities here to address any questions as well.
So, Ed, do you have any questions on this?
Uh, it does necessarily, nothing beyond, you know, uh, what Pat mentioned, that the, you know, you can work accessible parking spots, one of which has to be dead accessible and, um, with signage, but other than that, uh, everyone else.
Okay, Bob, do you have anything to add?
No, I, I just want to make sure you saw the planning board memo.
We did.
Memo thinks the parking's wrong.
Yep, well, we're gonna, I'm gonna have Pat speak on that, so. Pat, would you like to update us on what you see on here? And the planning board, obviously, they had some questions.
By the way, I didn't agree with the planning board.
Okay, well, Bob doesn't agree with the planning.
Kind of confused by the planning board.
Pat Brennan is our.
Peer review.
Yes, no, I, I know who Pat is, but for the audience. Thanks.
I'm assuming he's gonna say his name when he speaks, but. Pat, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Pat Brennan, P G engineer. I'll give it to you, I mentioned, in this, um, presentation, I submitted a letter to the board. It was really only a couple of comments, one was the power slots around the perimeter, uh, extra parking spaces needed, because of, you know, two additional handicap spaces. And, um, I think that was pretty much it. And as far as the, um, accounts from the planning board, they, or the planning department, I should say, they were using the fourth edition, the I T E manual, and that's up to, I think, the one edition now. I had some numbers, maybe a little additional, whether it's against the last group, and the board had one of the fourth edition, so. Those numbers are right, I think, is what I'm saying, uh, as far as the planning board, the planning department went with. I'm not saying that they're wrong, that, you know, if they need more parking, I really don't know. I think it's more of, you know, seeing a similar use and seeing what they have parking is, is part of the way to go here. Because, you know, in the planning board memo, they had a couple of their, um, the code for their environmental purpose, uh, building facility, they had eight point four six spaces per thousand different feet, and the current number is three point five base plus a half. And that's just one of the examples. A lot of them are, um, pretty similar. You know, they're not as much as what, what that fourth edition had for the same uses. And these things involve a big time. So, you know, you really have to use the latest edition when you, when you come to those numbers. The fourth edition, I don't even know when that was published, but it was quite some time ago.
Pat, does, do these figures take into account the fact that this, um, as you heard the applicant say, this is accessible by pedestrian traffic from folks in the area? In addition to that, there's public transportation, the gator runs by this facility. Do those, uh, parking calculations take into account those two factors?
Um, no, not typically, because the, you know, this is on a, the gator does go in the area, so it, 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 um, you know, that, that does help. Um, and there are the, you know, the multi-handing developments nearby, um, which helps because those are all within walking distance. The, the one thing that I would say is that there is a stipulation in the bylaw that if there's a, um, common parking area within five hundred feet, you can use those spaces as well. The upper parking lot, even though it's gravel and the Rockwood Road feels, it's about three hundred and fifty feet away, although there's not a, there's not a direct path there, but there are paths in the area that we get to here.
Uh, these folks are coming to work out, so that's just some extra steps they're gonna get in.
Yeah.
Benefit.
No, it, they do take into, you know, count pacified, um, traffic. But, you know, like I said, this is a general road, so you really don't get the pacify traffic here, like, it's right on time.
So when you're using the municipal parking, if they had to, for whatever reason, would there have to be any stipulations, like on the weekends when it's the soccer times and the gym people are pretty busy then? Do you have to do anything like that, or am I just thinking too much?
Yeah, I'm a little too far.
Is that something we would have to do? Um, yeah.
You have to look at the adequacy of what's available, too.
Right, I mean, that's pretty crazy up there, so that wouldn't really be available on Saturdays to be used, so. I mean, after, like, the games, or, but not before that, not during the morning times. Because I would imagine the gym would be pretty busy on a Saturday, too.
Yeah, you can. So I, I have a building about four hundred feet from the parking lot. If, we're not, there's nobody in my office on Saturdays and Sundays, there's about, I think there's about thirty spaces there as well. That's at forty-one Rockwood Road, the last building on the right.
Yep.
This building is just off to the left at the dead end, so, um, I, I wouldn't have any problem with people using my parking spots on Saturdays, Sundays. It wouldn't be an issue whatsoever.
That was the conversation at the last meeting.
Yes.
My, my experience going to the South Shore Y is that during peak times, people park wherever they can park. And you can, you know, we could permit it and say, you've got to do this, you got to do that.
Right.
The reality is someone's driving up, they're dropping their kid off, they're just gonna pull up and, you know, they'll block three parking spots to drop their kid off, and then they're gonna move. They're not gonna be there for a day, you're gonna be there for like thirty seconds. Or if they're going to work out, they're gonna, they're gonna, you know, do a loop around the building if it's full. They're gonna go next door. Oh, look at this, it's Saturday, there's nobody here, I'm just gonna park here. You know, there are no signs that say, you know, you're gonna be towed or anything. They'll just, you know, people just figure it out. Or they'll go to the, the ball fields and be like, jeez, it's like some sort of soccer tournament going on, I'm not parking here. I'm gonna go to Roach Brothers, or, you know, wherever they go. And they'll, they'll find a way to park. I mean, granted, our decision's gonna take into account what the requirements are, we'll make the conditions, but, you know, water seeks its own level. People are lazy, they're gonna look for the closest parking spot, whether it's legal or not, whether it's in the decision or not. And, and I am among the people that are lazy, just, I'm not throwing stones. I'm always looking for the closest spot.
Well, I'm looking at it's a, that it's a pretty good-looking project for the, for the area. It's probably something that's gonna be a very good fit down there. And as a matter of fact, you're willing to make a concession to have some overflow parking if necessary. You'll know if you're gonna need that here, you know? Here, it might not even be needed.
We've talked to Ed here, who's the owner of the Train for Life, he's gonna handle the whole, whole project, basketball courts and everything else. And, uh, we've gone over parking quite a bit to try and make this work. And he, he feels we're in pretty good shape with, with the eighty-one space. In fact, he feels we're in very good shape. A lot of, a lot of people at the gym are, are in there for forty-five minutes, they come and go all day long. The gym is, uh, a lot of the athletic, um, courts are gonna be transient people, kids getting dropped off and parents leaving and maybe going to the brewery and coming back to pick them up afterwards, but who knows where they're gonna go, but they're not gonna, they're not gonna stick around there. A lot of drop their kids off and, and come back. So Ed thought it was a, it was pretty good the way it was, um, planned out here, so he thought it'd be sufficient. And again, we're making.
Do you know how we would go about confirming any overflow parking?
Well, yeah, we'll have to, look, I, I know you can park, um, it's up to five hundred feet away. You have to set it up.
That's, yeah, that's common parking, but it's his, his personal.
His personal, yeah, same thing, it's within five hundred feet.
Um, I.
But, so I would, uh, did you see the memo from the planning board, Paul?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do you, Andrew, do you mind putting that up there, so?
My bless.
Bless.
Do you have that, Andrew?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So with the, uh, special permit request, would we need to have any condition for overflow parking? Is that just a?
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna have to go into the decision.
Okay.
We'd have to have that for our decision.
Yep.
So like, we talked about this, like, it being similar to something like Starland without, you know, the restaurant piece of it. But how many courts, like, because I know that my kids take multiple things over there, and it's total chaos. The coming and going, the dropping and running is a nightmare. And, and it, it's, it's, it's a train wreck. Like, it's just, you can't get in, you can't get out, people are just dropping wherever they choose, and the kids are flying across the parking lot. So I do think, like, a drop-off space and whatever is a good idea, but I do think that we need to be mindful of all of that traffic. And you might say, oh, they're coming at different times, but when there's however many courts, and they're coming, and the parents are coming, and then the dad's coming afterwards, it, it gets very crazy. So as a parent of seven children, like, it's, it's a thing, you know?
Right.
So I just want to be mindful of that amount of traffic that does come in between the games and when they first come and when they end up, you know?
So. So we're, we're designing it for specific.
Do you want to go to the mic, just so the people online can, um, hear you?
So we are, uh, designing the basketball courts specifically for one AAU team, for his clinics, his camps, and his practices, mainly because there's not enough gyms to, for these teams to play. We don't have any intent right now of games. Any, anything, to be honest with you, like, that's just not part of what our business plan is, nor is it part of his.
Okay.
So if that.
Yeah, I.
Waits into your, yeah, just so you knew.
As you know, it's.
No, I do. And I, and honestly, from a staffing standpoint, it's like a nightmare for us, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're just gonna put aside, utilize the existing spaces that.
Is it up? Did he plant it?
Which. Yeah, right.
He already planted it.
I can't see enough.
All right, so.
Fortunately, fortunately, we do have access all the way around the building, so when people are pulling in and dropping off, they just keep moving forward and back out the other side, and those lanes don't overlap, so there's, there's.
It'll be marked, like, to go around, like.
Helps us out a bit, helps us out a bit to, to keep moving.
Just because, I mean.
Keep the traffic moving, yeah.
It's awful.
So I think we've answered a lot of our questions here tonight, um, in Pat's review. But so Bob, we'd have to get some language sent to us, have you review it for this off-site parking, and it'll have to match our zoning.
Yep.
So when would you guys like to continue to set, set us, you know, maybe some language and a plan showing us your off, off-site parking? When could you get that in, by?
Uh, we could get it in for the next meeting.
Okay, so September ninth?
Yeah.
All right.
So.
What's that gonna consist of, Bob? What, what do we, what do we need to do? Do you know what we need to do to make sure we have the right info?
You're gonna have to match the language of the zoning bylaw.
Right, okay.
Um, Andrew's got it up there for off-site parking.
Okay.
And whatever, wherever you're proposing it, you're gonna have to show that. All right.
You can propose that at my lot that I have now.
Yep, both, you'll show whatever, whatever off-site parking you're proposing.
Is there a set number that we have to meet for the off-site parking?
Um, I would think you could review that with, uh, Andrew, Pat, and Greg.
Okay.
All right.
That's good.
I just want to echo what Larry said. I think it's, it gets a welcome addition to Marshfield, I think it's a good use of the land, and, uh, I think there're gonna be a lot of happy customers, a lot of people that are gonna look forward to going and utilizing your, your facility. So, great location.
We're looking forward to it.
Anyone else from the board have anything?
I just thought it was a fairly elegant solution to what we had to discuss last time.
Right.
Anything from the audience?
Joe Pasevich Wilson wrote, I, I heard a couple of, um, claims or statements that, uh, people that bring kids to participate in AAU basketball are just gonna come in and drop off and leave. You know, having been in youth basketball for many years as a coach, my experience is that parents like to stay and watch, whether it's a practice or a game. I also heard that there's currently no intent to have games. So I just urge you to follow up with the need to provide for overflow parking for regular activities as well as special events. Thanks.
Thank you.
We talked about events, the last time I asked specifically about events, if there was game planning, any events or whatever, just because that would put a whole new, that was my concern over there as well, is putting a whole new spin on things, because, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they really should put, like, some type of a restriction on the other parcel that authorizes this parcel to be able to use, like, an easement. Right, well, well, that's what we're gonna work on. Doesn't have to be an exclusive easement, it could be non-exclusive, which means that both sites can use the parking, but there ought to be some easement language on the other parcel, so that you know that these spaces are available in case the property gets sold. I'm sure they'll have your attorney, your attorney get in touch with you, so we make sure the language is good by the ninth.
Would there be an avenue for them to remove that, if two, three, five years down the road, it doesn't?
No, it'll have to be recorded with the special permit.
But there'd be no avenue for them to remove it, say, five years down the road, if it doesn't.
They'd have to come back, they'd have to readjust the permit. So, Bob, I'm gonna put twenty-five forty A and twenty-five forty together, since you're gonna, we're gonna continue both of them, right?
Right.
All right, so we're gonna continue twenty-five forty A, Rick Colestein, Progress Way, um, till nine nine twenty twenty-five, and twenty-five forty, Rick Colestein, Progress Way, to nine nine twenty twenty-five. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, now we have twenty-five forty-eight Peter Bodenstab. Petitioner is seeking a special permit in accordance with three oh five ten twelve and three oh five nine oh two of the Marshfield Municipal Code to construct a twelve-foot by sixteen-foot addition with a three-point-two by twelve-foot porch on the property located on, at fourteen thirty-six Main Street, which is further identified on the assessors maps as being on parcel E fifteen zero three zero two K, is located in the R one zoning district. Uh, go ahead, name an address for the record.
Rick Savant with Stenbeck and Taylor, here with, uh, Peter Bodenstab, the owner of the property. So as you stated, we're proposing a small addition off the south side of the home, and currently the existing house is non-conforming to the rear, and we're seeking a special permit to extend that non-conforming structure. Uh, we'll not, it'll be further away than the existing houses from the rear. Uh, will not, it'll be further away than the existing house is from the rear, would not increase the non-conformity, but need a special permit because of the odd-shaped lot. The rear is 27.3 off from the existing house, so that's why we're here, just finding for this, uh, proposed addition.
Okay. This is the house by the cranberry bog?
Yes.
Correct.
Pretty funky-shaped lot, huh?
Yeah, unique and, is it rear? I guess it's rear, it's, almost has to be a rear line, I guess. Front and another line.
Front and a line.
Yeah. But it qualifies for the rear. Felt safe, best to come here to get relief from the prior, from the prior-
Yeah.
Sure.
Yes, was there anything from conservation or planning on this?
We have been through conservation and received approval for that, I believe it was last week, last week or two weeks.
Last two, last Wednesday.
Yeah.
What was that, I'm sorry?
Last Wednesday.
Yeah, we were front of them and it was approved.
The six, right.
Uh, Andrew, you have anything to add other than your notes?
Uh, no. It's not gonna make the structure any more non-conforming than it apparently is. It's just the rear setback that it's allowed.
Okay. Anything from the board?
Bob, I- I've always admired the house, I think it's beautiful, and I think what you're proposing is fine.
Bob, anything?
I have no issues at all.
Anything from the audience? Beautiful, really is. They have, really have, it looks great. All right, seeing that there's none, I'm gonna move that we close, uh, 2548, Peter Bodenstab, 1436 Main Street. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Heidi Koway, aye.
Jean Lee, aye.
Mack Brothers, aye.
Um, I moved that the board vote to grant the petitioner's application for a special permit. Subject to the conditions, this project will require a building permit, final ASBIT built, and a certificate of occupancy. Uh, based on the finding, the applicant's proposal to construct a 12-by-16-foot addition with a 3.2-by-12-foot porch on the property located at 1436 Main Street, as shown on a cer- certified location plan by Stenbeck and Taylor Incorporated, Richard Savant, PLS, dated July 14th, 2025, and on architectural plans not dated by Alyssa Jones Design Studio, two pages meets the special permit criteria of section 10 to all of the bylaw. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Heidi Koway, aye.
Jean Lee, aye.
Mack Brothers, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so now, continued hearings, we have, um, 2542, Matthew Bruce, trustee, Bruce Family Realty Trust, 8 Ocean Street.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Brodsky, I'm a local land use and environmental lawyer, and I represent the Bruce Family Realty Trust, and with me is Matthew Bruce, the trustee, as well as other members of his family. We were last before you on July 8th, and at that time, the board was, at least in my opinion, prepared to close the public hearing, but requested that we provide a full instrument survey plan showing the location of the walkway, which is the subject of the application. Uh, we sent you on August 6th copies of that plan, prepared by Feldman Geospatial, showing that the walkway is located entirely on the trust's property. I believe that the neighbors, the Benders, may dispute the location of that property boundary, and Stenbeck and Taylor has submitted another plan from 1991. I, I respectfully suggest that if the property boundary is disputed, that's a private property issue that can't be resolved before this board. Um, you did request an instrument survey plan, which was provided, and you can rely upon that for purposes of this application and issuing a decision. Uh, I will tell you that the trust will continue to work with the neighbors to resolve their concerns and the property boundary line issue, but that may take weeks, months, or potentially years if it ultimately ends up in Land Court, which we hope is not the case. So we suggest that the public hearing should not be continued or delayed, since the board now has all of the information it needs to render a decision. If ultimately, um, it's determined that a portion of the walkway is not located on the trust property, uh, the trust is going to have to address that, because that would constitute an encroachment onto a neighbor's property. Uh, but again, that's separate and distinct from the application, that's for the board. And I just want to remind you that procedurally, there are two requests for relief. Uh, the first was the appeal of Mr. Stewart's notice of violation regarding alleged construction in the special flood hazard area, and also in an area of protected dune. Uh, you may recall that Mr. Stewart testified at the last healing, uh, hearing, that the walkway is not, in fact, not located within the flood plain, and I believe also not within that protected dune area. Um, I don't know whether Mr. Stewart wants to withdraw that notice of violation, in which case, the appeal is moot, and that doesn't need to be addressed by the board, or if not, uh, the board could issue a decision reversing that notice of violation, because I don't believe that there's any basis for it. And secondly, we've requested that the board please grant a variance to maintain that walkway within the side yard setback, for all the reasons we discussed at the last public hearing. So we're here to answer any additional questions or concerns, uh, but hopefully we're in a position this evening for the board to close the public hearing and render a decision or decisions. Thank you.
Andrew, do you have the, the new survey, or, and I guess it really- So Bob, can you help us out with this?
I'm sure I can. I, I looked at some of the old aerial photographs, and I didn't see that what's there today in 2023.
It wasn't there.
It wasn't there, Mr. Galvin. Um, it was constructed by a prior owner in 2019. Uh, the fence has been there for decades. In fact, the fence is shown on that 1991 Wilbrook Survey Plan. Uh, you, you will note that that plan is based upon a historic pen, I believe it's called the Dwelly, there's a note on the plan. It's a notoriously difficult and potentially inaccurate historic subdivision plan that I understand from speaking with surveyors, uh, has created all sorts of survey issues in, in this neighborhood. Um, and a- again, uh, this board's job is not to resolve any property boundaries. You have a stamped plan, um, by a respected professional land surveyor that confirms, based upon instrument survey, um, that this walkway is located. I believe that is the historic plan.
The Dwelly plan, yes. Lot 341, right here, so, 32 feet, 87 feet long, and that's about all you get.
Correct, there are no bounds, um, and, and a- again, I, I've had conversations with surveyors regarding that plan. Um, it's a difficult place to accurately survey.
Bob, did you say you didn't see it in 24?
No, the deck wasn't there.
It's actually 2019.
I had a, um, question about that, so this was a picture that the, a butter sent in. So this actually shows a deck in that location beforehand, before the previous owner expanded it. So there was a deck there already that they didn't expand, so, you know, there could be, and the butter had been there for a special period.
Andrew, are you, are you calling those, that stair and that landing a deck?
Technically, yeah, it's a beam, maybe it's from the house, and it's, uh, it's technically a deck under four, under four feet.
Andrew, can you pop the near map photos? And if you go back to April of 2019, I think you can see what's there, it looks like it was stairs. With, there might have been a landing too, but it was pretty narrow.
Isn't that what that is that we just saw?
Hmm. Did the neighbors send that picture? The first one, I find the stairs visible in, uh, April of 2019.
So, that's, I think that's their, uh, yeah, that's the, that's this, that's, oh, you, that's-
Yeah.
So.
It's like there's stairs from a platform of some type.
Something there.
So that's, that platform with the stairs you're saying is a deck?
Well, the platform might qualify as a deck.
Right.
But it looks like there's three stairs coming down from whatever that was.
Right.
And? Six.
But then if you go to the next photograph in July of 2019, there's a huge deck there. Uh, the, the deck was extended.
There it is. Yeah, that's completely different.
And, and again, it's not constructed as a typical deck, it's wood framing sitting on concrete, so I don't believe that there are any posts or anything, uh, that would resemble a deck. And I, I did address what a deck is or would be defined in the building code, and it was unclear to me whether this would constitute a deck. It's intended to provide, along with the walkway access, um, because the property slopes towards the rear, and so literally the walkway sits, you know, at grade level, um, on the street side, and then it's slightly elevated as the topography drops off. But it's not as if it's constructed on sonotubes or typical deck construction.
Andrew, have a current photo, what's there today?
So this is now, right here? Is this now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's really been no change, except for maybe the front stairs going down from the previous owner?
It's bigger.
It's wider. So Adam, your argument is that is not a deck?
Uh, my argument is that I don't know what a deck is, it's not defined in your zoning bylaw, it's actually not defined on the, either the 9th or the 10th Edition Building Code. I found a definition of deck going back to the 4th Edition Building Code that's referenced in my supplemental. I was just making a point, because I did not know what this was. Um, I assumed that it was a structure, um, subject to, uh, the zoning bylaws located in the setback, uh, which is why, in response to the notice of violation, we filed a request for a variance, and then addressed each of the elements for the grant of a variance that would support that relief. It's required to provide safe access along that side yard, and you can't access the building on the other, uh, other yard, and you need two means of, uh, ingress and egress, that's the second means of ingress, and so they need a safe way to get there, and that's what the purpose of this was, is to provide access there.
And how wide is this?
It's 6.6 feet. Not have the grid plan. The width of the walkway varies, it's narrower at the front of the property, and then it does widen towards the rear, so the dimensions are there.
I mean, it's, it goes to the property line, it's about six and a half feet.
Yes.
I can't hear anything.
Six and a half, six and a half. Six and a half feet, extends from the house to the property line.
To the property line.
In, in that location, it's narrower as you get closer to the street. And there's some additional, uh, dimensions there, I think it's a little over four feet in some areas. Two inches away from the property. And again, just to remind the board, um, my clients didn't install this, it was the prior-
I'm just gonna put that right there.
Been what? I'm sorry?
My clients did not install this structure, it was installed by the prior owner. And, and, and came to light when there were neighborhood, you may remember, neighborhood issues. Again, it was originally called out as a, as a floodplain violation, but the structure's not located in the floodplain, which is why we're asking that perhaps the notice of violation be withdrawn, so you don't have to vote on my appeal. But we did come in, obviously, with a request for zoning relief to authorize that structure.
How does Andrew feel about that?
Andrew, are you okay with the, uh, notice of violation being withdrawn?
I, yeah, I stepped it up to that one last-
Yes, last meeting.
I would remove, uh, you know, the floodplain-
Floodplain, yes.
But like I said, there was a deck there, this is a deck still, it's a new deck, it's bigger than the deck that was there, but the deck that was there was also non-conforming, so technically, this was an expansion of a non-conforming deck, which can be issued with a special permit, it doesn't have to be, meet the strength of variance standards that I get your foot on.
I agree.
That's, that's all I was saying, but yes, it is a tech, it's a structure, it's an egress, all of that.
So Adam, did, I'm just looking at this again now, but did you apply for the special permit?
We did not, we applied for variance.
So.
Can we, and, we can get the issue with special permit, though, right, Bob?
Has to be advertised.
He's gonna advertise and apply.
Right? Has to be advertised?
So would you like to do that? And leave this standing and?
They're, they're already into the side setback, I'll accept the fact that, you know, what existed outside the door was a deck. May have had steps down from it, but I think it was a deck, or, or a landing, but there's not much difference there. So I think they could do it by special permit, where they're already in violation of side setback requirements, and it's been expanded, it's just an after-the-fact special permit.
Right. I agree. So would you like to apply to that?
The, the lot line issues, I agree with Attorney Brodsky, 100%, those are gonna be resolved.
That's outside our scope.
Outside us.
I'm looking for a copy of the public notice, to see whether there's some language or other relief that may be required.
You, you're looking for, is that, you said Nancy?
I'm looking, I, I, I'm looking, I don't know if Ms. Prager-
That's what's on the agenda.
Whatever's on the agenda.
It does say, and any relief deemed necessary.
I thought Bob had said in the past, that's not sufficient.
Andrew is going to withdraw his notice of violation. So then what's in front of us is the application for the variance.
Which is not, is moot.
Which is not a special permit. I mean, I, I'm all in favor of denying the special permit, actually denying the variance and upholding Andrew, and then they can reapply for, um, or no, Andrew's, Andrew's, so we don't have to uphold-
I mean, if we're being technical about it, and I'm not suggesting they need to do this, it sounds like they're willing to come in and apply for the special permit, but I mean, it's technically built without zoning compliance.
Yes.
So, and it's not so old that, that's not a dead issue.
No, it's, it's, it's a live issue, so, are, are you willing to just submit the new special permit?
We are, again, looking at the notices, Ms. Prager mentioned, uh, for relief from 305608E2, and any relief deemed necessary to maintain the exist, existing structure on the property. Again, if the board is directing us to submit an application and re-note a special permit, I will do that.
That's what I mean.
Understanding that the burden is lower, I would not like the board to take any action on the variance, please, but to continue that, so that we're not precluded from seeking zoning relief.
Just so you know where I'm coming from. I, I try and be open.
You're gonna need an extension for the 100 days.
Why don't you continue the variance, what, get an application for a special permit, and if the board grants a special permit, they can withdraw their application for a variance.
Sound good?
Send that to me tomorrow.
Yes, you need a letter extending, uh-
Yes.
The application for the special permit, because the deadline to file for the September 9th was today.
We also need the 100-day variance. You get an extension for time on that.
How much time should I, uh, should that extension be?
Just extend by the same time till, you know, from now until September 9th, same amount, number of days, Adam?
Then we can do everything there.
Yeah, I'm happy to extend it for-
30 days, 30 days is plenty.
Thank you. And we will get you an, an application tomorrow.
All right.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna, so now I'm gonna continue this.
Move to continue to, uh, September 9th.
Second.
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Heidi Conway, aye.
Jean Lee, aye.
Mac Brothers, aye.
We're loading up on 9/9 now. Now, did Dana?
Good luck, guys.
Did Dana extend the Malden Street one as well?
I did not hear from Dana. I only heard Jay about from the van. Jay's not helping Dana with.
Are they online anymore?
I don't know if he's withdrawing this one, but I can pull the permit to basically take out all the stuff that was in this structure and turn it back into a garage.
So we're just continuing until we get a game plan?
What's our timeframe?
No, we're not talking about U.S.
What's our timeframe for this?
That's a special permit, so we get plenty of time.
Okay, I just.
It's not a variance.
To Bob's early point there, we don't want to constructively grant.
Grant this use.
Permission, yeah.
But I believe on the special permits, we have more time.
Do you know when this one came in?
Dana Jr.'s?
Yeah.
I can tell you one second.
I think his first name was.
But it's a special permit, so.
Doesn't matter, we're good.
We have more time.
Special permits are fine.
Okay, so we don't have to, we can just continue this to?
I don't see a variance word in there. Does anyone else?
It's not a variance case.
No, so this, this, we're just gonna continue to the 9th. Is that what we did with this other thing?
The other one coming, just with the same thing.
Yeah, we'll do the same thing. Oh, with the 23rd.
Right?
All right, so I'm gonna move that we continue 2544 Dana Jr., 37 Malden Avenue to September 23rd, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Heidi Conway, aye.
Jean Lee, aye.
Mac Brothers, aye.
All right, now, where are we? Ooh, the Jetty.
The last people standing again.
We got.
It must be, must be me.
Yeah, but we got a few more things we could talk about first.
I didn't even see them there. Well, the podium's right there. You can't see anything.
All right, 23, 2534 The Jetty LLC, 278 Ocean Street. Name and address for the record?
Richard Vaughn, The Jetty, 278 Ocean Street, Marshfield, Mass. I'm here today to re-present and hopefully get approved the bollard system and site plan approval for 278 Ocean Street. I did submit some things at the last moment today. I don't know if people had a chance to look at them. But I'm hoping those will kind of just help guide us in our direction here and close the loop on this one.
Were we just, were we just waiting for the updated site plan?
Yeah.
So at, at our last meeting, you, you folks asked me to meet with Andrew and get his comments. So I have not got an official new site plan yet because I haven't received Andrew's comments. By hand, I drew on some of the key points and I'm hoping that will keep us from kicking the can down the road anymore.
This has been a long road here.
Rich, we met and I gave you comments, right?
And, and you said, your, your final comment was, the best I can do, Rich, is issue some, use some written comments. I'll do that shortly.
Yeah, I have not gotten able to do that. My other comment to you was, you need a site plan to, with, like, the engineers trying to show, like, the cross-section of what's gonna be on their surface that's gonna comply with the slope and all that, right?
So I, I was hoping to, to only go back to the engineer one final time with your comments. So I did send the engineer a, a drawing today that I did that's a section through the walkway. And I was hoping that would, if, if that was approved, we would add that to the plan and move forward. Hopefully get the approval based on the final plan.
So you wanna know, like, what you're gonna have on the ground?
It, it's in everything I submitted today.
Yeah.
Okay, which is those, okay. And then you made it 16 feet.
Yes.
Right? Which is what Andrew, I think Andrew's recommendation was.
Yes.
Feet? Okay.
Egress, handicap egress.
Andrew, didn't you have a comment about the landscape design, what was gonna be there, like the buoy out was gonna be kept in place? Any of the, any of the other items that are out in the, say, the courtyard area, which, you know, they're gonna float away during storms? What's gonna be that?
I mean, honestly.
So most, most of the items, most of the items in place, I have photos of from storms in 2014, 15, and 18, and they haven't moved more than an inch. One of them tipped over during the worst storm ever, and I think I've submitted those photos. If not, I have them here. If the storm's getting worse in 14, 15, and 18, it's not gonna be that plant that causes the disaster in Brent Rock.
Yeah.
So you're looking for clarity on what to put on the ground?
I, I've, I've made the submission. I've shown the existing conditions. I've made the submission of what we want to put on the ground. I'm, I'm looking for approval on that.
So what you're proposing is what is appropriate for ADA, right?
Yes, we, we have an affidavit from a seasoned architect that specializes in ADA, and I submitted that to you folks as well. It, it addresses the parking, the sign. It addresses the walkway. It addresses everything that we've talked about here, stamped by a, a licensed architect that specializes in ADA compliance.
Where was that?
I submitted it to you about three weeks, about four weeks ago, Andrew, and then I submitted it again to the board today.
It's in the file.
It's in the file? I mean, I saw it, but I didn't know what.
You know where it's saved, Nancy?
I think it's saved with, there were two things that were submitted in the last meeting. So it's probably saved like the day, like, whatever was saved, July 9th.
Now, has conservation been part of any of this or where are we at with that?
We met with conservation. Conservation got put on hold pending a review by the select board at Mr. Galvin's recommendation. The select board then said they would not, they'd take no action on it. Then we came back to the ZBA prior to the conservation. So we still have to go to conservation. It, it's, it's been a lot of meetings, but conservation put it on hold at Mr. Galvin's recommendation based on the select board.
What were they waiting for from the select board?
It, it goes back to, uh, goes back to whether or not the select board was gonna revisit the use of the patio. And the patio, and, and the select board voted no action on that.
Oh, because of the outdoor dining?
So it was a stay, so.
Conservation usually goes last after all of the permits are obtained.
Okay.
If there's any change in the plan, as a result of conservation, they can go back here.
You have to comply with it anyways.
Does the public have any questions or comments?
Anything from the public?
Joe Pesevich, Wilson Road. I'm hearing kind of a rush here. And I'm not, and I'm hearing some conflict or lack of agreement on what materials have been submitted and reviewed. And, and just giving me, that's without seeing all the paperwork. My, that's my impression, just sitting in the audience. Where's the rush?
Where's the rush? Ongoing.
Well, I, I just heard there were documents submitted regarding ADA compliance. I just heard that, just seeing some of the images flying by on the screen.
So we've already reviewed them. So if you haven't, you can go online and.
Well, something was just given to you tonight that was not given to the building, the zoning officer.
We reviewed them.
So, well, the zoning officer, whose comments you're apparently looking to and relying on.
Well, the zoning officer.
Has not been able to, there seems to be a disagreement about what has been provided to the zoning officer and what he has been able to comment on.
Well, I'm not sure about that, but regardless.
So it sounds like.
Doesn't make our decisions for us. We take his recommendations, absolutely.
Do you rely on his recommendations?
We take his recommendations under consideration when we make our decisions because he's not deciding for us. If I say I rely on him, that means he's making our decision.
I'm not here to argue with you. I'm just giving you my, my impression that this is obviously a rush. And also, I'm also not sure if the kind of work that's being proposed is gonna be something that's permanent since the possibility that this facility is gonna have to reopen that area for parking at some point could occur. And looks like what's being proposed, since it says bollards, which I assume are very deeply set coated concrete posts. I'm just wondering if that should be taken into consideration. If this area is then returned as parking at some point, what's gonna happen then?
Well, that's not in front of us right now, what's gonna happen.
Of course it's not, but it's, it's a possibility, is it not?
We can't make a determination of what might happen in the future. We just.
And this is an unresolved issue before the select board.
No, it's not.
At the ti, at the moment, they've taken no action, but the last time I heard, it was an unres, it was not a fully resolved issue. It was still something of, of some controversy.
Bob, is that accurate? I thought.
Not what we heard.
They took no action on it. I don't know whether.
That doesn't mean that, so that, so that doesn't mean it has not been, that means it has not been resolved if no action was taken.
Does that not mean they went to the original decision?
I mean, Mr. Vaughn came in with his attorney and, you know, made, you know, some pretty, you know, coherent arguments about the ability of the select board to reverse itself.
Right.
And the select board took no action on it.
So does that mean that it's?
I think it would be speculative for anybody to try to say that something's gonna happen with the select board at this stage.
Right, I mean, I think that's.
I don't think you can act on speculation.
Well, no, there are no facts about the future.
Right.
And it would be speculative to assume that nothing was gonna happen. And as I recall from that meeting, the town council was in disagreement with the select board on the issue. So I'm just giving my impression. Sounds like a lot of unresolved things here. It sounds like the, your zoning officer, who you rely on for opinions, is not on the same page with the proponents.
I haven't heard.
And that's my impression.
Okay.
Okay?
Your impression, but as far as I understand, from what he's told us tonight, you're calling this rushed. We're getting, this is all new information to us as well. Doesn't mean we're deciding anything tonight.
That's right, that's right.
That is correct. I am right. Absolutely. Thank you.
And when was this application put in again, Rich?
It began sometime in February and then we.
Just checking.
Probably going back and forth on it.
Yeah. From my perspective, we have more than enough information to reach a decision tonight. I don't see the need to prolong this another minute.
So Andrew, are you comfortable with the drawings that Rich submitted? I mean, I think we need a plan that shows the cross-sections on it.
We've got the plan from Merrill Engineering.
No, Andrew had asked for a plan showing, because he's moved, go, Andrew, go ahead, speak to this the way you would like to, about moving the handicap spot from one to another. You believe that you need something that shows that and the cross-sections that go with it.
Like I said, in the meeting with Rich, the handicap space used to be right here. It was right accessible. It was the quickest and easiest route directly right into the building. When all COVID happened and all this stuff turned into outside, you know, seating, they eliminated a handicap parking spot. So you made the structure less handicap accessible. You cannot do that by law. It has to remain the same level of accessibility. So you still have to provide a handicap accessible spot. You still have to provide an accessible route. That route has to be, has to meet all the standards for slope and surface. And none of what has been proposed. I can't look at this sketch and say that, that's, that means it. If I was a architect, there was no way I was standing there saying that, that's okay. What's up on the screen? This was what was submitted to us tonight from another thing, looking for site plan approval. They're showing the 112's roof. They're showing the, the input, you know, space that you need, access space or advanced accessible space. They're showing us how the concrete sidewalk is going to be, what's coming underneath the type of ground. They're showing us the slope on the earth you tell. This is what is expected when you do a site plan that's going to show handicap accessibility. It's not what the music's got moved here and here and here.
So Rich, you said you have an architect or a guy that does the handicap stuff?
Yes.
Would you have a?
All, all of that, all of the information that Andrew just showed is, is cut and paste from a, from, from, we can add that on.
That's.
Very easily.
That's what we're.
It, it has nothing to do with existing, existing conditions. It's a cut and paste that we can put, put on there very handily.
It's gotta be on.
I was hoping that we could get all the comments so that I don't have to reopen this again and, and.
We're not reopening it.
But we'll not go back, not come back with another plan from Merrill and have more comments. That's what I'm trying to avoid.
So the comments you're looking for are what? Just to be specific?
Just to, I, I understand what Andrew wants. We'll cut and paste some, some, some more details on there. At our last meet.
Go ahead, Andrew.
That I meet with your, that I meet with your site engineer, that, that wasn't on the table? You didn't want to stick them on you?
You said, you, you said you wanted to meet our architect on site. It just didn't seem like if we took your, it seemed as though if we took your comments and added them to the plans, which we never received, we could meet the same goal without having an architect come down from Cambridge and pay him by the hour to meet on site on something that's a very, it's a very standard architecture. It's a very standard detail we can add to the planet. It just seems like a lot of detail. We're not building a building. We're landscaping. The, the other thing that I think is super important here that we're missing is that when that handicap, when we were granted the permission to use the parking lot for a patio, the front door is no longer the point of entrance for handicap accessibility. The point of entrance is at the street. It's where the sidewalk meets the patio. You can never put a po, it's just like at a mall. The parking spots are some distance from the store, some distance from the door. There's a ramp. There's a sidewalk. They don't get to park next to the front door. The point of entrance for this facility now is where Ocean Street meets The Jetty property. And that's a very important point. We'll never have a parking lot next to the front door, a parking spot next to the front door again.
There's no such thing as a point of entrance in handicap accessibility. There's an accessible route that contains egress.
And that starts at the sidewalk, Andrew.
It starts at where the, where the spot is.
Okay, but it doesn't start at the side, it doesn't, the, the fact of the matter is there is no longer a spot next to the front door and there cannot be again because the facility is now different.
This is the problem. It's I'm, I'm having an argument with somebody that doesn't speak the language and doesn't understand what I'm trying to get at. And that's why I'm wanting to meet with your engineer.
You also promised, you, you've. All right. So we, we've been going over this back and forth.
Can you put these items on the plan that he's asking for?
I, I, I can, but it would be great to have his comments after the 45-minute meeting that we had, after he canceled the first one, so we could move forward. It's been three weeks and we haven't been able to get the simple comments.
Uh, Mr. Vaughn, excuse me. Mr. Vaughn, Andrew, these meetings are available on YouTube. I would suggest to you, Mr. Vaughn, you have your engineer at Merrill, watch this meeting and incorporate the comments that you've heard at this meeting or that they would have heard at this meeting and then present that plan to Andrew and then to the board and hopefully at whatever next meeting.
Can you have that ready for the 9th?
I can have that ready for the 9th.
Thank you.
I'd appreciate any other comments in addition to any of the accessibility issues, because I think there might be more.
Andrew said his piece. Andrew, am I putting words in your mouth? Have you, is there anything else? I think he said his piece.
I, I, I have all, all my concerns that conservation meetings, conservation comments, CBA comments, multiple meetings. I think you two put them together at this point. Ostriches, low pass, handicap accessibility. That's what I'm worried about.
So.
So we're gonna move to move this to the 9th of.
So wait a minute. You have all of that, what Andrew was looking for?
We, we continue to have concerns without science. Andrew is still concerned about. Andrew is still concerned about the planters that again, we've seen there for years and years, they weigh eighteen, twenty-two hundred pounds. But he has a concern and I don't know how to get from concern to code. If I come back with the same planters, are we going to be kicking the can down the road one more time because now we don't want planters?
I'm not hearing anything about planters. I'm hearing about the handicaps.
So.
Show the handicaps. The fall of items in the parking lot. He did, or, or the, the seating area. He did mention that. But if the engineer said that twenty-two hundred pounds and they're not going to move anywhere, that's addressing that issue. To me, what I'm hearing with the handicap is that Andrew wants to know, these are the handicap spots. Where's the entrance of the door and where's the accessibility, the direct accessibility from the handicap spots to the building itself? If it's on an engineered plan and he's looking at it and can approve it, that's what's there. That's what I'm hearing from Andrew as far as the, the handicap spots goes. I totally understand if the part's twenty-two hundred pounds, it's not going to be going anywhere. If it does go somewhere, we have catastrophic damage down there.
But, but, but again, I just heard Andrew say that I had to take all his comments from all the meetings we've had and assemble them into this next plan. And again.
Brian said that, but.
Maybe I would, I highly recommend maybe send Andrew an email tomorrow. Maybe Andrew can send you, respond to you with the exact concerns he wants. Get those on the engineered plan. I'm, I'm, I'm with Brian. Um, from what I'm hearing, I'm good to go. The problem I have is I kind of agree with Andrew. Where's the front door to your building? How are they getting from those spots? Is it going to be Ocean Street? That might not be too feasible. You have someone in handicap going down Ocean Street, right? It's very tight. Maybe it's got to be a direct path where there's going to be nothing in the parking lot. I mean, in the, in your seating area where there's direct access from those spots to the entranceway of your building. And that's where it's going to be. If it's going to be a, a, a smooth path or one of them, I, I, I don't know. I'm not a handicap, um, advocate. I don't know what those laws and rules are. I'm depending on a plan also. So that's, that's what I could see here. And if that was there, as Brian said earlier, I'd be ready to, to go tonight.
So we, we understand what's needed here.
So wait a minute, I would, Andrew, if you could please address this in an email by Friday to Mr. Vaughn so it's very clear what exactly you're looking for with the handicap situation, what you showed us before with somebody else's plan, what you need exactly, so that there's no confusion. You're.
I'm not going to do that.
You're not, you're refusing it?
Yes, I am. I'm not, you don't tell, like, the ZVA doesn't tell me what to do.
We are suggesting that you please do this for an applicant to clear this up. So it's for the public as well to know exactly what is going to be happening on this plan. This has been going on for quite some time. So it's just in order to expedite it, get it done one way or another. This is the best way. Bob, what do you suggest?
Either the architect comes down and meets with Andrew or Andrew provides his comments. One of those is going to happen.
I, I think Andrew's comments have been said in public at this meeting. I, from my perspective.
Is that going to be.
Merrill can watch the meeting on YouTube and, and get a sense of what needs to get done. I don't, I don't think it needs to get more complicated than that. They can watch it on their phone.
I just, it seems, it's very confusing. I want this, I want that. I don't like the bollards. I don't like this. I just think it's clear. Just like we would have to write down exactly what we're looking for from somebody. If we're just talking about the handicap situation, it's, it's pretty clear what you need to do. Are you.
Clear as day.
About any of that?
Clear as day on the handicap.
All right. So can you send, have Merrill send the plan with the cut sheets like you're talking about to Andrew so that he can take a look at them? And then hopefully we'll have this resolved by the.
In a timely manner so that there's none of this back and forth and, you know, C.C. Nancy on it, so that everybody's on the same page with it.
All right. So I'm going to move that we continue 2534, the Jetty LLC, 278 Ocean Street to 99, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
I agree, aye.
Jean Lee, aye.
Mac Brothers, aye.
Thank you.
Ridiculous.
All right. So now, is that everything? Nancy, other than the, we got 2423 Fred and Ann Curtis. Right? So 2423 Fred and Ann Curtis, third trustee, 45 Abbey Street, discussion, agree modification to significantly reduce the project that was approved on May 14th, 2024. Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, the board approved the 14 six by 20-foot, two-story addition and a 15 10 by 20-foot deck. Are you presenting this, Andrew?
What?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So this project here, they, um, they were approved to, uh, do this big addition out back here.
Yep.
Two-story addition. Um, it's, it, this was an existing piece. They were going to bump it out a little further and then put the, the second floor on it. They're not looking to do this, this huge addition anymore. They're looking to just keep that, that existing footprint and then just add the second floor on top now. So really, they're not really looking to change the, uh, footprint, I believe. Much more than what was already there. It's, it's, it's a, so I didn't know if they have to reapply for special permit to, to change it to lean less, far less.
They do, Bob. It's not, this isn't.
If it was, is it within a magnitude at the end?
If it was de minimis, I would say no, but this is like, this isn't like moving something two feet. This is taking off a, a section of something that was approved. I think it's easily approvable, but we have a process and hate to tell you, I think we got to follow the process. I mean, the rules on modification are the board reserves the right typically to make minor modifications. You know, if we're moving something six inches, we're taking off a foot, okay, but this is like a significant change. You know, will anybody care? I don't know. But, you know, if the house ever gets sold, a modification was made, someone looks into it, kind of creating more problems. If, if they just apply for a special permit, you're going to approve it. I, I'm certain of it. So I, I just don't want to, I know this like, it's kind of a pain in the neck, you know, seems to be easy just to do it, but.
Well, Andrew, they, do they already have a current permit for this?
Yes.
They have a special permit, yeah.
But I mean, a building permit.
Uh, I don't believe they applied for building permit yet.
Okay.
And they're whacking this thing off by what, about six feet?
Where are they? I don't know.
Actually, they do have a new building permit.
Yeah. So they can still do the project and come in and get the reduction and just keep going, right? They have the permit.
How come they didn't come in?
Right?
Maybe it's a monetary thing. I, I don't know what it is.
So they could.
They have a permit for what?
Yeah, they have a permit to build the bigger building so they can just continue and then pick it up in the as-built and get the special permit. Right, Andrew?
Yes. So they have a, they have a building permit currently to build what was approved on the existing special permit.
So this won't interfere with their.
This isn't going to delay their, their construction at all.
No.
It would just delay their as-built.
Right.
Or their, their C of O.
Honestly, I don't think they even started construction yet.
So Nancy, if they get in by tomorrow?
Yeah, that's for September 9th.
Tomorrow's for September 9th, Andrew. You think they could get in?
Can I make a suggestion?
Can we make it the 23rd?
Where there's no rush because it's not going to interfere with what they already have.
Yeah.
Could we make it the 23rd?
I'd like to pull a few from the 23rd to the 9th.
We could do that too. Cause we also have, um, 91 o'clock.
We got a bunch on the 9th. Has everyone moved to the 9th?
Yeah.
Is that okay, Andrew, the 23rd?
Why aren't they here? How come these people aren't here?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we don't have to do anything with that.
So what are we doing? I'm sorry.
So now we're on the, um, we're gonna, they're going to just apply for a permit.
Okay.
So now we have the board. Obviously, the modeling work will continue until we get the final thing from that. The minutes aren't done yet, right?
Nope.
When is that? Do you know?
I don't know.
One is complete, the July 8th.
You want to do July 8th?
Yeah.
Oh, we'll do July 8th. So.
Yeah, the other two.
Approval of minutes for July 8th, um, 2025. So, I'm sorry, that's Larry's job. Go ahead, Larry.
I make a motion and approve the minutes from June.
July.
July 8th, 2025.
Second.
All of you in favor? Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
I agree, aye.
Jean Lee, aye.
Mac Brothers, aye.
So now we have our, uh, rules and regs, uh, review, but since I think unless people have changes they've already had in mind tonight, what I'm going to ask as well is that the select board has asked that we, um, interview. We haven't had to do this in a few years because we've only had one applicant at a time. But they would like us to interview the people applying to be on the zoning board. And we've done it in the past. It was a practice we had. So I would like to set up a meeting that we do that at.
September 9th?
No, it's got to be by next Thursday.
Next week. Yeah.
Can I just suggest you, if you do it with one person, I don't believe we have to have a public meeting posted.
What? If you do it. It's not one person. We're doing the board. It's the board.
But.
People, when we did it.
Nancy, what Brian wants is for all of us to get together and to interview the people that are interested.
That's what we used to do.
They used to come to the meeting.
They used to come to me, but we, we only have till next Thursday from what I understand.
Okay.
So we need a meeting.
If you give me something.
Write it right now?
Well, we hit.
Write it right now, Bob. How do you write it?
We hit Mr. Uh, Pets, Pesovich.
Yeah, tonight. But so Bob, how would we write that up? Meeting?
Is that, he's just making his call.
And all I put on it is interviews?
Discussion to interview potential ZVA candidates.
All right, that. And then we're going to, and Nancy and we're going to review the rules and regulations. We'll go over it tonight and at that next meeting. In case anyone has changed, they already know.
I'm sorry.
Whatever Bob said, I adopted.
What he said, because Brian was talking. Say that again, Nancy. I'm sorry.
Interview potential ZVA candidates. Now, when do you want to do that?
By next Thursday, right?
It has to be done by Thursday. So we're going to need a room. We don't know where that is yet, but let's just at least.
We'll check tomorrow and.
Let's at least say.
What's your schedule like, Nancy?
I'm off Fridays and Mondays for the rest of the summer, the rest of the.
So could we do it on Monday and Friday then?
Right. If, if you did that, I would.
Split them up.
I would commit.
Yeah, just for you.
I have to use my $2000 before they.
No, so Monday obviously is, who's in here on Mondays?
Select.
They don't have it next week.
Until the 11th.
No, they're off next week.
Probably no one's in here, right?
Yeah.
All right, let's do Monday and if we can't do Mon.
No, Nancy's off on Monday.
Oh, no, sorry.
I am not doing anything. I will, I would.
No!
Oh, no, Nancy, forget it. Tuesday.
No, no, no.
No, no, we have to be done by Thursday.
Nancy, no.
We'll do it at your house.
We'll be on your deck, your deck.
We'll be on your.
All right, what day's good for everybody here?
I'll bring it up.
Next week.
Next week.
Whatever day is fine.
I'm good any day.
Next week, uh, yeah, Tues- Tuesday, Wednesday.
We need four people.
I mean.
Wednesday, Wednesday or Thursday, you're okay.
How many people are we interviewing?
I have no idea. I mean, it's a pretty big list.
Oh, it is, really?
So let's, yeah, there's four or five, six people on there. So let's go Tuesday. Everyone can do Tuesday?
Yes.
We use our Tuesday.
Who usually comes in here on Tuesdays?
Well, we don't need to be in this room. We can go anywhere. I can press in the recreation room over at these library plaza.
Can we go to the, um, the Habba Master Building?
The Bridgeway?
We could use the COA. So just find out if we. So just see if it's open Tuesday. If it's not, we'll find a venue. But we know we're voting on the meeting.
Well, it doesn't have to be televised. So you really have it anyway. So if it came to it, we could always go into the planning office or I think Danielle's little conference area is a little too small.
Well, we're going to be discussing our, our rules and regs too. So this doesn't, we don't have to, oh, we don't have to be, um.
It doesn't have to be televised.
Televised, yeah.
Televised, but it's open to the public.
All right, cool. So that's those two things on that.
We'll find a spot.
Tuesday.
Okay.
But whatever date you can get, where we're agreeing on. Yeah, 6:30 still? Yeah. Fine.
Thank you.
Yes, you do.
And I was going to bring, just to cook some stuff, I was going to bring a Betty Crocker oven.
Oh, very nice.
Yeah.
What happened? Star saying, I have to pay attention.
Cooking with a light bulb?
Yeah, bring the.
You're a wise guy.
All right. So is that everything? Oh, does anyone want, have anything they see on this that they can detect right now? My only thing, A, members of, and officials, officers, under where it says, um, appointed by the Board of Selectmen, the regular members shall elect annually from their member, a chairman, vice chairman and clerk. I would like to remove the word regular, just remove it, and it would say the members. So that includes everybody.
That's fine.
That's my start.
Um, and I would vote, we revisit the fees.
Oh, the fees.
The fees on, um, 40B applications. So that it's for the.
More in project. Not from 2,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever is enough to make them stop coming in. No, but, but, you know.
Fend them off to 2032 right now, but yeah, that sounds good.
But, yeah, I mean, if, if they're applying for 150 units, there's a whole dog and pony show that's involved.
I know.
And.
It's a lot of.
There's, and they're making money.
Yeah.
They can afford to pay some additional fees to cover the, the inconvenience to the town.
On I do.
To Nancy or Nancy's successor.
We have something else for February 9th and for September 9th. That just reminded me. Um, I got an email late today from Walter Sullivan's office regarding bridle crossing.
Yeah.
They'd like to go before the board to change it from rental to condominiums.
Shut up.
All right, take them out to December sometime.
Really?
So can we put them on the 23rd?
Wait a minute.
Or did you tell them? We'll put them on the 23rd.
I thought we can.
That takes, that takes those, those units, the, the, the credit the town gets for 100% of the units.
To 14.
Yeah, that's no bueno.
Well, I don't know. We'll, we'll have to, Bob, you'll have to review that to see.
It's a, it's a substantial modification of the permit.
Right. So they'll have to.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Not a minor modification.
No.
They.
September 23rd at the earliest. Why don't we kick them?
Send a letter in for a minor modification. The board has to, within 20 days, determine that it is substantial and require a public hearing.
Oh, so we could do that.
After their letter, after their letter comes in or no?
Well, the first thing is they have to send us a letter. Right now, we.
Yeah, they can't do it on a telephone call.
Yeah.
So put them on for the 23rd.
Did he send anything in writing?
He sent an email.
Yeah.
Requesting to get on the next.
That's.
The next meeting is the 23rd.
Oh, my gosh. I don't love that.
All right. So was there anything else? Anyone can, I said regular, we're going to, did anyone have any words in there that they seem to delete, remove?
I, I will have some.
I will have.
Comments. But it's good, we can bang this out on Tuesday.
So Tuesday, 8, 19.
Yeah, go through this. Very beautiful looking word processor.
That's a typewriter right there.
I have, uh, I, I have a, like, I went through it, retyped the whole.
Oh, in Word? You're right, Andrew. Will you send that to us?
Yeah, I've got it right here. I, I, I went through it, typed it, retyped the whole thing. So it's all on a brand new Word file.
Oh, awesome. And you're going to, you're going to put some input in there too, right? Nancy, you as well?
Yeah.